Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 13th meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone. We'll take communications items up front, and then we'll briefly convene as a budget committee. So let's take item 461, please.
Request of Mary Ann Fitzgerald to address council regarding Bureau of Transportation, Bureau of Environmental Services Coordination Charter.
Good morning.
Good morning. I've submitted the charter and my written comments to you, but I want to just talk from my heart for this one because I was so excited when I saw this charter. It was signed last September, same day as the Constitution was signed in a historical context, but I think it has the similar potential in order to get the bureaus working together and working with the neighborhoods to resolve issues that seem unresolvable. But I also know that you need top management support in order to make these things work. I worked for government for 31 years, and I have seen at least three separate efforts of cross-program coordination fizzle because they did not have top management checking in. So on the first page, it's got wonderful words in here like, "Both BES and PBOT will agree to coordinate on reassessing priorities to support more comprehensive program and project implementation. The purpose is to increase efficiency and effectiveness in supporting and implementing both bureaus' priorities while building lasting and improved working relationships across bureaus and improving livability in our neighborhoods." This is a win-win-win. So two months ago, I met with PBOT and BES staff, and we were talking about our favorite project, Southwest Capital Highway between Multnomah Boulevard and Taylor's Ferry Road. And the team leaders at the meeting said, "Oh, perfect case study for this coordination charter. The issue is cost, a high cost of the stormwater program and the high cost of building the much-needed sidewalks and bike lanes." So we have high hopes that this kind of charter can help us resolve the issues of costs, work with the neighborhoods on design, and get this project built. But I know that it needs your support. So it says in here that the leadership team will check in twice yearly. I hope you check in with the leadership team and make sure that this continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, next, please.
462, request of Floyd Jones to address council regarding Water Bureau Budget.
Good morning.
Yes, so it is truly difficult to fathom that city council would be considering this afternoon demolishing two of the city's most significant historical resources, two of the city's most significant water system resources at a price tag of $80 million. As you know, EPA does not require disconnecting or eliminating open reservoirs from the water system. They don't require demolishing historic structures. And as the Historic Landmark Commission member wrote to you, at the March 30th Historic Landmark Commission meeting, the Water Bureau admitted that they don't need the storage at Washington Park. As you should know, water demand has declined since 1988, and that the basically stable landslide, historic landslide area will become destabilized by digging. And this was shared with me by a geologist at PSU, is now a consultant with the Water Bureau in 2012. He said, "As long as they don't do any digging up there, everything's going to be fine." The Water Bureau further admitted that a new underground storage tank would likely not survive a major earthquake. So we're going to spend $80 million for no public health benefit, degrade our system, create new and unique public health risks. I wrote to you in April outlining options for avoiding cutting and plugging up a Tabor and demolishing the Washington Park reservoirs, and that was subsequent to doing a public records request at the Oregon Health Authority. I've had the pleasure of working with water managers in Rochester, New York, where they have two older historic open reservoirs set in city parks. They have no intention now or anytime in the future of eliminating those from their water system. They're 25 years older than ours. And the difference between why they got a deferral and we didn't is that they collaborated with the Health Department. They didn't use a surrogate to send a message that we really want to bury the reservoirs, which our Water Bureau did. They worked with them in collaboration. Their mayor got involved. They work with the Health Authority. Their governor and their senator are both working on revising this poorly crafted rule. This afternoon, the Water Bureau is counting on your failure. They're counting on your failure to not have fully considered, have fully read all of the documentation and the comments submitted by the many who oppose these projects. In their rebuttal, they selectively ignore arguments. Great on, you're not going to read about that. FERC overestimating dam break inundation. They, in small and large ways, misrepresent the information that was presented in opposition. Even when it comes to their own documents, this is a final infrastructure master plan report. They suggest it's draft. It says draft, it's a final. I did a public records request asking if there was a final. This is it. So even on small points, they misrepresent. They don't discuss nitrification at all. They suggest that, "Oh, we only submitted information on an LA problem." They're already spending money on that.
Floyd Jones, please wrap up because you've used your time.
Yes, so you really need to create an opportunity where all community stakeholders are seated at the table, as was outlined in a council resolution that said you should follow your own adopted public involvement principles.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, next person.
Item 463, request of Jamie Partridge to address council regarding contingent worker task force.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor Hales, members of the council, I'm Jamie Partridge, and I'm here representing 15 Now and Portland Jobs with Justice. We want to thank you for agreeing to our request to upgrade the fair wage policy and to pay a minimum of $15 an hour for all full-time city and contracted workers, and we look forward to your vote today to seal the deal. That leaves over 2,000 city workers, primarily parks and recreation, who are classified as casual or seasonal, who need to be upgraded to at least $15 an hour. There are also central city concern and transitional projects, workers funded by the city who need the $15 upgrade. The money is available to bring these workers out of poverty. It's in the budget surplus, or you can tax the rich. The Portlanders clearly favor that. You resolved on February 18th to set up a contingent workers task force to establish a path to upgrade these casual or seasonal workers to $15. Apparently, there's some dispute about who should be on this task force. On February 18th, many of you acknowledged the value of labor and community voices in this conversation, and we urge you to include Laborers 43, AFSCME 189, Jobs with Justice, casual, seasonal workers, central city concerned transition projects workers. In the interest of transparency and democracy, we urge you not to set up an internal Parks Bureau-only task force. As of May 1st, the city is further mandated to move these workers to $15. We encourage you to obey the May 1st Stidler arbitration, which settled a longstanding grievance from Laborers 483, ordering the union to cease and desist assigning bargaining unit work to non-unit workers. These non-unit workers, the casual and seasonal workers, should be brought into the bargaining unit and paid bargaining unit wages. Again, the money is available. Put us on the task force, and we'll show you where there's a will, there's a way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Item 464, request of Zan Hamilton to address council regarding mid-block street painting ordinance.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor Hales, Commissioners Novick, Fritz, Saltzman, and Fish, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you this morning to lodge my support for the mid-block community repair ordinance currently making the conciliar rounds. My name's Zan Hamilton, and I'm a resident of the large Cully neighborhood. As you're aware, Cully is a highly diverse neighborhood comprised of streets that lack sidewalks and improve rights of way, featuring many houses on large lots with properties separating hedges, and few neighborhood embellishments or community gathering areas, except Conimox Park. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Fritz, thank you for that. We love that park. I've lived in my block in Cully, which stretches from northeast 57th to northeast 60th for five years. When my family and I moved into our house, there were two small children on this large block, and now they're 14, between the ages of newborn and 10. I'm an event organizer by passion, and when I planned our block's first block party in 2013, I discovered that people who had been living on the block concurrently for 25 years or longer had never had occasion to meet. There was hardly a sense of community, and most neighbors didn't know each other's names. Our inaugural block party integrated games and food sharing to serve as introductions and community-building opportunities. People came together to offer what skills or items they could toward the event, and it was a blast. This year, I became involved with City Repair, taking part in their many well-structured workshops geared towards participation in this year's Village Building Convergence, affectionately known as the VBC. Interested in fostering the social capital on our block, I held meetings with neighbors about the improvements we could potentially make on our street. As neighbors now gravitate to the center of our block to meet, we decided that a fabulous and colorful design stretching down the street would showcase our community. From the Cully Association of Neighbors, I applied for and was awarded a mini grant to defray the cost of paint and other supplies for the project. However, we then discovered there is no permit for us to paint mid-block. Mayor Hales, I thank you for your support in the mid-'90s while city councillor of Mark Lakeman's community building projects, beginning with the Sherrett Square endeavor. I've had the pleasure of working with Greg Graismann from PBOT, and through PBOT and City Repair, we're working in tandem to extend opportunities to neighborhoods like mine by creating a mid-block community repair ordinance. The passage of this ordinance would allow for my neighborhood to engage in the placemaking and community-building activities that we have excitedly designed and that we believe would best fit our block. I would like to thank you in advance for your support in the timely passage of this ordinance, soon to appear on your respective desks. It would allow my elongated block of Wigan Street to work together towards creating a sense of place while strengthening our social capital within Cully. And our block party date is the 1st of August, and you're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, one more, 465.
Request of Mike Summers to address council regarding homeless issues.
Summers? Okay, so we'll give him an opportunity to come back, then let's move on to the consent calendar before our time-certain item. I don't believe we have any requests to take things off the consent calendar. Is that right? None now? Okay, then let's vote on the consent calendar as printed.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay, time certain. Oh, let me, we're starting the regular council meeting now, so some of the basic rules and procedures here. If you're here to speak on a council item, please state your name for the record. We don't need your address. If you're a lobbyist, you need to let us know that. Under our city code, we typically allow citizens on items where testimony is taken to speak for three minutes, if we have time for that, and it doesn't look like that'll be a problem this morning. Please testify only to the matter at hand, and we ask that during council sessions, if you have a, if you like what you're hearing from a fellow citizen, give them a thumbs up or a wave of the hand, and if you don't, you're free to do the opposite, but please let's not have vocal demonstrations in favor or against our fellow citizens' opinions in this room, so they have the chance to express them. So that's, and if you have council, if you have handouts for the council, please give them to the council clerk, and she'll distribute them to this. So the first item this morning is actually where we actually reconvene momentarily as a budget committee. It's part of the formal process that we go through in the budget. There's obviously a lot of opportunities for citizens to testify on the proposed budget, and we have more of those coming up, but this morning's item number 466 is simply the transmission of my proposed budget to the council, and that's what the clerk will read now, 466.
Mayor's message to budget committee.
So I'm convening the budget committee for the purpose of receiving the budget message. Committee members received copies of the budget document yesterday. This budget is the product of many months of work by city council members, by bureaus, by our citizen advisors, by our great budget office, and is now at the process, in the formal part of the process, of consideration by the city council. This budget reflects, I believe, Portland's priorities, and this council has been very clear about those priorities over the last few years. Basic services like streets, investing in affordable housing, making good on our commitment to public safety, and to changing the relationship between the police bureau and the community through how we deal with people suffering from mental illness, and investing in our kits. This budget reflects about $30.4 million of new funding for basic services, including over $19 million allocated to transportation projects, $6 million for affordable housing and homeless services, and remember that that $6 million proposed is on top of more than $90 million already in the city budget for housing from all sources, for a total of nearly $100 million invested into housing. It's proposed to allocate about $9.6 million for public safety and emergency preparedness. That includes funds to renovate the Portland building, to retain 26 firefighter positions that were potentially going to be cut because of the downturn that we had two budgets ago. Over the last two years, as I mentioned, I really tried to prioritize improving the relationship between the police bureau and the community, so investing in analysts to support the Department of Justice settlement with the city, investing in domestic violence intervention and gang enforcement further prioritize those efforts. I'm proposing that we invest about $4 million in our youth to expand the availability of parks programs and to make it free and available for more of our teenagers to engage in recreation instead of in pursuits we'd rather not them engage, to maintain funding for TriMet bus passes for young people in the city, summer internships, and a partnership with Concordia University to provide continuous support for children attending Fabian School in northeast Portland. I want to thank my colleagues on the council and everyone in the community for helping to shape this proposed budget. I want to see if there are any questions or comments from us as budget committee members before we return to being the city council. Questions or comments from council members, budget committee members? Okay, then this, this meeting of the budget committee is continued to Tuesday, May 19th at 9:30 a.m. here in the city council chambers, and we will now reconvene as the city council. So thank you, everyone. That's a formality that we are required to go through, and we made short work of it. Now we will move on to the next item, which is the consideration of the PDC budget.
Since we're slightly ahead of time for the next time certain.
We are. You want to take some count regular?
Can I suggest that we do the second readings first?
I think that's a fine idea.
483 is a second reading, for example.
Yeah, let's do that because we may not have a quorum later for those. I think you're right. Let's do, right, let's do 483.
43, vacate a portion of southeast Gideon Street, east of southeast Milwaukee Avenue, subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Roll call vote, please. Second reading.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye.
We invite the auditor if she wants to come up?
For 484?
Yeah.
Is she here?
You've got a bunch of Americans.
I don't think she's here yet. Let's see, we can probably do 478, but I don't know if staff is in the room. He was. Bear with us, folks, we have a time-certain item for 10 o'clock, and we're trying to not jump the gun on that.
Don't know that we have the team here. We could take a 10-minute break.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're going to have to do that. I think we're going to have to take a 10-minute break and return because the next item on our calendar is, is set for 10 o'clock sharp, and we don't want to start before that. So we will recess until 10 a.m.[1133.88]
...subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Roll call vote, please. Second reading.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye.
We invite the auditor if she wants to come up?
For 484?
Yeah.
Is she here?
You've got some bunch of Americans.
I don't think she's here yet. Let's see, we can probably do 478, but I don't know if staff is in the room. He was. Bear with us, folks, we have a timed certain item for 10 o'clock and we're trying to not jump the gun on that.
Don't know that we have the team here. We could take a 10 minute break.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're gonna have to do that. I think we're gonna have to take a 10 minute break and return because the next item on our calendar is set for 10 o'clock sharp and we don't want to start before that. So we will recess until 10 a.m. And take up the next item. So that is 467.
467, council to convene as Portland Development Commission Budget Committee to receive the proposed budget.
Okay, I'm now convening the Portland Development Commission Budget Committee for purpose of receiving the budget message. Budget committee members have received copies of this budget on Monday, May 11th and request that Gina call the role of the Budget Committee.
Good morning. Mayor Hales, Commissioners, I'm Tom Kelly, the Chair of the Portland Development Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to present PDC's proposed budget for fiscal year 2015-16. Last week, we presented our new five-year strategic plan and highlighted our focus on addressing the disparities in income and opportunity within the city. As promised, the budget before you is intended to deliver on the first year of our new plan. This budget with $213 million in forecasted expenditures supports the agency's aggressive efforts to promote healthy, complete neighborhoods, access to high-quality employment, equitable wealth creation opportunities, expanded civic networks and partnerships, and a more equitable, innovative, and financially sustainable PDC. In addition to its alignment with our new five-year strategic plan, the priorities of this proposed budget were established by the PDC Board at its board retreat last December and formed by the Central City and Neighborhood Budget Advisory Committees. Lastly, the budget and five-year forecast also reflect changes resulting from the six urban renewal area amendments. While immediate impacts to fiscal year 15-16 budget are minimal, the budget does reflect the near-term project priorities identified for the River District, North McAdam, and Central Eastside URAs. With that, I will turn this over to Patrick.
You? Morning.
Good morning. Morning, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. I'm also joined by Tony Barnes here, who's our Budget Officer, and so I'll walk through the budget. Our budget, obviously, is a fairly extensive budget. The presentation tries to kind of cover all the highlights, but certainly, we can get into whatever detail you want, and Tony here is probably going to be the best person to get into detail, so he's up here to answer any questions. We present this to you today and then we come back together again in two weeks to vote. So any questions and comments you have here today, if we can't answer them, we have time to get back to you. As our Chair mentioned, this budget is the first budget that you'll see that begins to implement our new strategic plan. So it's broken down into funds as required by law, but I'll present it according to the structure of the new strategic plan so you can see how our expenditures break down. Once again, as Chair Kelly mentioned, we are implementing also the budget impacts of the new urban renewal area amendments. So we'll see that when we get to those urban renewal areas, sections of the presentation, I'll point those out. Equally important is that we're also, this continues to fund the obligations and commitments that we've made as part of our Lentz and Old Town Chinatown action plans, and it's the first step towards a gateway action plan as well. And as is typically the case with our budgets, we have projects that carry over from year to year. Sometimes the timing of projects is hard to predict. Some projects carry on for many years, but what you'll see here is a number of the big-ticket items that were in last year's budget have been carried forward into this upcoming year's budget. And obviously, our hope is always to bring these projects to fruition, and some of these on the list, like our Daimler loan, will definitely pay out over the next year. We would hope to have some of the other items on this, like our investments in the Central East Side happen in 15-16 as well. Just as a reminder, because over the past few months, we've talked a lot about spending priorities in various urban renewal areas, and so this budget reflects a lot of those changes. With the River District, Downtown Waterfront, there's been a reduction in overall tax increment available to us. We still are able to reach maximum indebtedness in the River District, but it's on a very more prescribed timeline. And so the priorities, both in River District and the remaining funds in Downtown Waterfront, are really focused on a few priorities. Old Town Chinatown Action Plan is obviously at the top of the list, but we also are beginning to make progress on things like Centennial Mills and the Post Office. So you'll see those line items are more fully funded than they have been in the past. I've already mentioned the Lentz Action Plan. You'll see in the Lentz Urban Renewal Area that is more fully funded than in the past. Same is true of the Central East Side. Interstate is relatively unchanged from a budget perspective. You will see the affordable housing dollars that were moved forward as part of our discussion last year, but on the ground, we are beginning progress on projects like the MLK Alberta Project. And then, obviously, we have the elimination of budget for the Weyera, the Willam Industrial Urban Renewal Area, as well as the Education Urban Renewal Area, which was closed down as a result of the budget amendments. So here is our, once again, when we walk through the budget at a high level, we talk about resources and we talk about expenditures. Resources and expenditures don't match because the resources we have on hand oftentimes exceed what we have forecasted for expenditures, and so you'll see that as well. We have just under $300 million in total resources available to us in the coming fiscal year. What this chart shows you is that the bulk of these resources actually are on hand. They come from debt proceeds of bonds that have already been issued. That's the big blue part of the pie chart here, about $180 million is money that's on hand. And we can talk about that if you want. It's a dynamic that's been growing over the past few years as projects have not moved forward as quickly as we've hoped, but we've had the proceeds to move forward on those, and so they remain on hand. And then the other big part of our current resource base is what we call short-term debt. That really means that it's pay-as-you-go. So we don't have to, this is what we expect to receive during the upcoming fiscal year, and it's available for us to spend, and we don't have to, like I said, issue long-term debt. The long-term debt piece is just below that, is about 7% of our resource base. So right now, we're in this fortunate position that we really don't have to rely on any new debt, long-term debt, in order to cover the budget that we're proposing here. I would hope and expect over the next few years that we would begin to spend down this balance and then begin to have to borrow again, but that's really the position that we find ourselves in. On the proposed budget side, as I mentioned, as Chair mentioned, our proposed budget is about $213 million in proposed expenditures. So that's obviously leaves a difference that we have in contingency, which is money that will roll over into future year budgets. If for some reason, we have a need for additional expenditures beyond the $213, then we have that money to draw on if we need to. Very high-level categories in front of you, and the slides that come after this will break it down according to the categories in our strategic plan. But you see, still about half of the money that we have on hand that we propose to spend in the coming fiscal year is in the broad category, property redevelopment. When we get into the more detail, you'll see that's, the bulk of that sits in a handful of projects. So it's both in specific projects, like the remaining dollars that were going to the County Health Building and things like that, but it's also in line items around commercial property redevelopment. So the Old Town Chinatown Action Plan is largely budgeted through opportunity funds that we can put into specific projects. We're putting money currently into something like the Society Hotel or the Casket Building in Old Town. These are $6 million expenditures or numbers like that. Those add up to a fairly decent amount in our property redevelopment category. The other big category, obviously, is our set-aside to housing. There's a chart that will walk through the set-aside that I think you've seen now for the past few years. The percentage reflects the amount of our total budget, so it's not just TIFs, so the number is below 30% for that reason. It's also below because we spend more and less in certain years, and so every year, it's not going to be, the set-aside won't be 30%. It actually reflects the cumulative percentage of housing investments. So this is the housing set-aside table that I referenced. We've been working, we've been showing you this now for a few years. It's a difficult slide to absorb in one sitting. Just a few things to point out. It's a cumulative number, the percentage is, so when you look on the right-hand column, if you say, "How are we tracking in terms of our set-aside and where are we ending up?" You can see that in the 15-16 column, the third column there, that's where we'll be as a result of our expenditures in affordable housing in the coming fiscal year. On the far right is where we're tracking. So you can see that, for example, in the River District through next year, we'll be at 40%. By the end of this forecast, we'll be at 32%. That's largely the result of expenditures that occurred in prior years that bumped the number up over 30%. In Interstate, we're moving from 36% in this coming fiscal year up to 42% as a result of our $20 million additional commitment. So that's how it all kind of works out. I'm happy to pause if people want to ask any questions about this. The last thing I'll say on this chart is at the bottom, you can see the cumulative percentage, which at the end of next fiscal year will be about 36%, and it will trend down a little bit over the next five years, but it'll still be about 34% above the overall city target.
I do have a question about the North McAdam set-aside. The council's policy is 36% per the ordinance passed in 2011. Why does it reference 42% after a URA amendment?
This is the result of the conversations that happened as part of that, that talked about the additional set-aside after five years. But Tony, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, the five-year forecast does not include any of the additional, doesn't include any additional set-aside amount above the 30?
It does start climbing over.
It's been a last year, yeah.
For the forecast for '16-'17, it says 51%?
Right, it's above the set-aside target right now, and over the life of the district, it'll average out to 42%.
As you spend money on other things, right?
Right.
But, once again, this is what we're looking at here, and I know that there's desire for future conversation on this. The requested budget is the 15-16 budget. That's what's in front of you. The forecast is simply that, it's a forecast, so it doesn't get approved. It just gives people a look ahead. When we get to North McAdam, what I would emphasize is we have the initial dollars in 15-16, and then the next big payment in '16-'17 that gets us to the $19 million to get parcel three done. So that's the near-term amount, and then looking out is when we, it's really the next five to eight years where we have the remainder of the dollars to think about. So as I mentioned, when you take our budget and now restructure it according to the new strategic plan, and I just want to, just as a caveat, just say, this is the first year we're doing this. This is the first budget that we're presenting in this format. So we obviously do have a very heavily-weighted budget allocation towards the first objective into the plan. But you can see that when you create an objective around healthy, complete neighborhoods, and you pull in all the work that we do, whether it's downtown or near downtown or in East Portland, it all falls into this big category now of healthy, complete neighborhoods. You can look at that in a positive way as that's exactly what we're about, and that's fundamentally what we should be spending our money on. Or you can say, "This is too much money going to one objective." I think part of this is just to get us thinking about it in this way, and we can think definitionally about how we want to allocate the money. But as we currently spend our money now and as we currently define the objective, all the redevelopment money, all the commercial corridor work that all goes into this category. I can show you in the next slide, I think I have it, well, a few slides up, I can break that down into more detail. But that's how this gets broken out now, sorry.
Patrick, on this slide, where do you book the general fund support you receive for neighborhood economic development? Which of these categories does that fall within?
So it's in a combination of the equitable wealth creation. I think some of it goes into the access to high-quality employment, and then the remainder of it goes into 21st century networks. So the general fund work is not in the green, the big green pie.
That's all tax increment.
Yeah.
So, just, this is stuff we're seeing for the first time, and we're trying to create new categories to fit the strategic objectives. My initial reaction to this slide is I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah, so let me go to the-
So if this slide is intended to tell the public something about our new mission, I have no idea what it says.
Let me go to the next few slides, if you don't mind, because we do have some tables to walk through this. So if you break each of these, so if you dig into each of these categories, and the numbers are still big, this walks through the five objectives. So the number that you had for healthy, complete neighborhoods, about $113, $114 million, you can see that it's almost exclusively tax increment, and it's roughly split between what we refer to as regional assets, but the big projects that I mentioned early on, Centennial Mills, Convention Center Hotel, Post Office, Union Station, those are big dollar amounts. And then the work we do throughout our different neighborhood projects. So you can see they're listed, our commercial loans, all the grants we make, the storefront grants, the pre-development grants, as well as all the transportation, the infrastructure investments that we make. So that's how that breaks down. Like I said, almost entirely tax increment funded. Just, so the $1 million, is that the federal money in the Union Station? Is that what's in that category on that one, Tony?
Related to the contract placeholder.
Yeah, okay. So I think that's just non-TIF, but I think it's other public money. Next category down, you can see much smaller, the access to high-quality employment, you see a more even breakdown between TIF investments, non-TIF. The non-TIF, a lot of this is where the economic development, traded sector economic development, general fund money goes. It also reflects some of the EOI money we get, that's federal money as well. But more of an even split there between TIF and non-TIF. And you can see the split between the work that we do, working directly with the business community, more traded sector job growth, as well as the work we do around workforce development, and helping connect people to the jobs in the traded sector companies that we're working with. Third category, wealth creation within communities of color. This one is a combination of the entrepreneurship work that we do, that's largely general fund-supported, as well as the small business development services that we provide, general fund-supported. This would be where you would see the venture port and money that flows through us as a result of general fund. And then the TIF-funded loans that we make for businesses in our urban renewal areas. So that's how we get to that number there. The fourth objective, 21st century civic networks, partnerships, as we've talked about in discussions around a strategic plan, this is, once again, somewhat of a new objective for us. And so from a funding perspective, there isn't a lot of money flowing into this at this point in time. I think some of that, it'll come as a result of initiatives that we undertake through this. But most of the money that you're seeing here is our MPI work. We believe this is fundamentally about creating community capacity so that we have partners at the neighborhood level who can develop the district plans and implement on the neighborhood level. And long-term, that's what we're really building through this program. So that would be, in my mind, the first of a series of initiatives that would come out of this part of the strategic plan, and money would follow as well. And the last category really relates to the operations of PDC. Some of this is just the pure staffing, overhead administrative operations, but there's also a fair amount in here around property management, management of our assets, of our loan portfolio, which carries a fair amount of expense associated with it as well. with it as well, but also generates a return for us as well. So that's, that's the high level here. The last slide on this section is, in that big seventy-one percent category, healthy, complete neighborhoods, this is another way to look at it, which is, here's how we're spending that money in that, in that, in that big part of the pie chart. Once again, one hundred and thirteen million dollars is what we're talking about. You can see the breakdown by program, so very, very little spent on administration and business development. The bulk of the dollars are in property redevelopment, whether it's direct investments in, in redevelopment, or loans and grants made to promote redevelopment projects. And then all the work that, the investments that we make in, in public infrastructure, parks, public facilities and transportation, that's, that's how, you know, we get to that number. And then on the, on the other side, you can see the breakdown, we call it by fund, but it also is by, by geography, except for the, the bottom two funds. So you can see where the dollars within this, this, this budget category reside. The bulk of them are in, obviously, River District, and then the Convention Center. Convention Center primarily because we still have the twenty million dollars sitting in our budget, originally targeted to the renovation of the Coliseum. And then, and then we have money targeted for the Convention Center Hotel. So these two budget, those, those two URAs have the bulk of the dollars, but you can see the, you know, Gateway Interstate Lence also carry a fair amount of this budget as well.
So next year, when you do this, I'd like to see housing included as a part of healthy neighborhoods, because it's, I think that's a really interesting graphic that you just showed us. And to me, having affordable housing in neighborhoods is part of a healthy neighborhood.
Yeah.
So that would be, if you could just add that.
Sure. We can do the, on the left side, on the right side, because we don't know exactly where, where the dollars will flow in the coming fiscal year on the housing side, we can certainly include it as on the programmatic side of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Commissioner Fitch, I just want to stop there. Is that, does that help to provide that more?
Yeah, I, my, just, my only suggestion is, as you fine-tune the alignment with strategic plan.
Yep.
I think, just, I have a basic rule of promise, if there's like three or more commas in a descriptor, you lose me.
Right.
And I, I, I think it's just easier to follow neighborhoods, you know, operation, other things.
Yep.
And to load it up with all the values-based adjectives.
Okay.
It's hard to figure out what we're talking about.
Okay. So-
I have a further clarification question. How much is the total general fund that you get?
I have a slide at the end of this, we can just, to remind you where we're at on that. So what I want to do is then now walk through with one slide for each urban renewal area, just to kind of remind people of the key priorities, and the, and the dollar amounts, you know, where we are in terms of maximum indebtedness. So River District, as I've mentioned, Old Town Chinatown Action Plan remains the largest priority within, within the River District in the, in the coming year. That's going to, that's going to be through a lot of smaller projects, relatively smaller projects, and so we're already, we're already moving forward on, on that. But then River District also carries the large signature projects, and so we do have Centennial Mills that we're moving forward on, Union Station, which we continue to make investments, and then the Post Office, which may not have significant expenditures in the coming fiscal year, but we probably will have far more clarity on how we're proceeding during this fiscal year. You can see, so that, as a result, the River District expenditures are largely focused on property redevelopment, and then we have the, the housing set aside is about fifteen million dollars out of River District. I won't, I won't go through all the details on the, on the current state of the River District, but as you know, we did, we shrunk the River District, still, still have the opportunity to reach maximum indebtedness. So you can see, we're about, about one hundred and sixty-five million dollars away from reaching maximum indebtedness, and we have until 2021 to reach that. Next, next one is Downtown Waterfront. Downtown Waterfront is a closed district, meaning we've, we've, we've passed the last date to issue debt. We continue to have dollars in Downtown Waterfront that either haven't been spent or recycle. So we, so the total amount that you see in, in, in this fiscal year, coming fiscal year, which is roughly eight million dollars, is a result of, is a result of that. And because we, we have properties that we have purchased in Downtown Waterfront, as we dispose of those properties, and the, and the real estate market improves, we actually do get substantial value back. So Third and Taylor is a property that we recently sold, there's a hotel developed, that's money that flows back into Downtown Waterfront, so we can reinvest in our, in our projects. Right now, once again, the, like River District, the main priorities for the money we have in Downtown Waterfront is to support the Old Town Chinatown Action Plan, the, the two districts kind of gerrymander themselves to cover the entire geography. So, so the, the, the money that goes into this action plan will come from one of those two, those two districts. And as I mentioned, we've reached maximum indebtedness on this a long time ago, so this is one where we're, we're slowly paying off the debt. Convention Center, once again, a closed district. We issued last bonds in 2013, that, that cash is part of the cash balance that I showed you at the beginning. We have two major line items in our budget there. One is the twenty-plus million dollars that we have. In this budget, we've actually moved it from a Coliseum-only line item to, to more of a Rose Quarter redevelopment line item. It doesn't, it doesn't in any way change the availability of money, but we wanted to just kind of open up the conversation about what would happen with that money. And then we also have the four million dollars that is targeted to the contribution to the Convention Center Hotel in this district. And then we, there's, there's remaining set aside here of, what's the total left set aside? Is it, is it more than eleven and a half million dollars? Or is it-
About twelve remaining for set aside.
Yeah, so it's about twelve million dollars total left in the end, through the end of the district for set aside, and so, and so housing, I think, may have one or two projects left to, to complete in the Convention Center district.
Patrick, as we know, the Convention Center Hotel's been tied up in some litigation.
Yeah.
There's been some recent press reports of apparently some negotiations between the plaintiff and Metro to put an end to that litigation. I assume whatever I've been reading is inaccurate or incomplete, but the question I have for you is, are any of the dollars that we've allocated for this project being discussed as part of any settlement of that lawsuit? Or is our money completely outside of that discussion?
Our, our money is completely outside of the conversation, certainly when, when there's a conversation about properties that may be available for, for any kind of, you know, negotiation. People reference our properties, since we, we still own three or four of the major properties at that intersection, but, but our priorities are very clear with those properties. They, they, they all have substantial value. We expect to get full value for those properties, and we expect to see development on those properties. So, so we're willing to talk with any party who wants to talk, who wants to negotiate with us on those terms. And, and if it happens that, that the plaintiff has those interests, then there could be a conversation. But beyond that, you know, our properties have value, and we, and we expect to, to see outcomes on there that, that fit our, our strategic plan. Central East Side, we've had a lot of conversations about Central East Side as part of their renewal area amendments, so we don't, I don't, we don't need to rehash all those. The, the, the longer-term priorities are listed here, the redevelopment along the light rail line, particularly the Clinton Triangle is a priority. In the near term, the dollars that we have relate more toward our proposed purchase of the ODOT blocks, which is moving along at a, at a, at a very deliberate pace with, with ODOT, but we expect to be able to complete that transaction. So the dollars we have would allow us to acquire those properties, and then put those properties back out for redevelopment. We would hope that that would end up with a complete recycling of those dollars, so that we have them for other purposes in the, in the district, or an investment that helps, that helps further redevelopment on the site. Longer term, we would have the, the resources in the expanded district to support redevelopment in the, in the Clinton Triangle. We, we obviously have a lot of, there's a lot of activity in the Central East Side, a lot of business activities, there's, there's a lot of small-scale redevelopment activity. We don't have significant dollars to, to invest in those projects, but where we can, we do put small amounts to work, whether it be through storefront grants, those kind of things, pre-development grants, or small-scale business loans. But for the most part, this district, the business, the business activity in this district happens on its own, and that's, and that's, I think, as a result of a lot of public investments over many, many years. North McAdam, as we talked about earlier, and we've talked about a lot over the past few months, the, the budget for North McAdam, if you look out the next five years, has pretty much been, been spoken for through all of our conversations with our partners, whether it be our affordable housing partners, with, with Zydel, with PSU and OHSU. So what you're seeing in the near term, in our, in North McAdam budget, is the money being, being set aside for the parcel three project that we discussed, the affordable housing project, money being set aside to, for the construction of Bond, and money beginning to be set aside for the completion of the Greenway. Those really are the near-term priorities for the district, in addition to our initial investment in, in a project alongside PSU as well. There's a two million dollars in, see, this fiscal year, the next fiscal year. But, but that's really the, the, the kind of universe of investments we're talking about. We have a little bit of money in Opportunity Fund line item, in the event that projects come along with, that need our support, that, that most likely would be on the Zydel property, but it could be elsewhere in the district. On Interstate, there's, Interstate is, obviously, there's a lot happening in north and northeast Portland, a lot of, a lot of investment activity happening. We view the, the, the role of our dollars and our investments to, to help achieve the objectives that we've laid out in the strategic plan, that, 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 that our community stakeholders have. So, so we, we're trying to be very strategic. Activity that's happening on its own, that the market is driving, we're trying to, to basically stay out of those transactions, not, not encourage further speculation or, or appreciation of, of property values, and we're trying to work directly on commercial corridors, making investments that benefit local businesses, working with, with locally-owned businesses, longtime property owners, and then some of the more strategic work is, is along corridors that we do think need, need some additional investment and helps. So you, you may have seen that we're now ramping up conversations with stakeholders along Lombard about how we can turn Lombard into a more kind of integrated commercial corridor, but, but have it happen in a way that, once again, that, that supports the existing businesses and residents along, along that corridor. As I mentioned, we still have a significant amount of our loan, our eight million dollar loan to Daimler to, to disperse, so that'll, that'll, I'm assuming that will happen in, in this fiscal year. So I think what's fascinating about Interstate is, if you look at the bar chart here, you have this nice distribution of investments, and I think that really does reflect the, our ability to invest across a lot of different priority areas, and it's not simply focused on property redevelopment. There's a fair amount that goes into infrastructure, to, to working with the small business community, and we also obviously have a significant commitment to affordable housing in Interstate. Lenstown Center, if you, if you take the requested budget that we sent you in February, and, and now look at the proposed budget, what you'll see is an increase of about twenty million dollars over the next five years in our commercial, commercial property redevelopment line items. So I think it goes from fifteen, from February now to about thirty-five over the next five years. That's a reflection of, as we completed the RFI for our properties in, in Lenstown Center, and we've selected the, the partners we're going to work with, and we've worked through their, their pro formas, we've now seen what it's going to take to move all these projects along, and so it's not thirty-five million total, but, but it is a significant investment in our part, as well as the Portland Housing Bureau is also going to make a significant investment, so we're, we're accelerating dollars there as well. But, but we, but we have the resources to do it, and it's, it is the main priority in Lent, and so, you know, it's, it's exciting to be, to think about putting that, that amount of money to work in, in Lenstown Center. We do have some other projects in Lent around, you can see the streetscape projects and other sidewalk and safety improvement projects. On Gateway, Gateway is unlike Lent and Interstate, it actually is fairly resource-constrained. So the total amount you see in the, over the, in this fiscal year is, is about six million dollars, maybe seven million dollars. We, you can see the priorities that we have there, so we're making investment in the, in the park that Parks Bureau is developing. We have about three million dollars set aside for, up to three million dollars for the development of the site that we have adjacent to the park, and we're reviewing proposals on, on that. So those two projects alone will use a fair amount of the money that, that we have budgeted, but we also have, I just signed an IGA with PBOT to do some, some, some streetscape work, so we have some other infrastructure investments as well that, that we plan to make in the, in the coming year. We will probably be coming back to you this fiscal year with, with a more in-depth strategy for Gateway. I know the mayor's been spending a lot of time thinking about Gateway, what's, what are the right set of activities that we can be engaged in to, to activate that neighborhood. And we have our neighborhood prosperity initiative districts, the dollar amount that is, that goes into these districts is quite small, and it actually, some of the districts haven't performed as well as we had projected from a tax increment perspective. It's, in some respects, it's, it validates our selection of these districts, and that, and that these really are districts that, 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 that need, need the most attention. And so we've supplemented the TIF with general fund dollars, with the revenue-sharing dollars that flow back to the city, to the county. That money flows into this, and then PDC has also supported it with our enterprise zone business development funds. I could spend all this time talking about everything that's going on across our, our MPI districts, but I think you've, you've heard different stories about what's happening in Jade, or Rosewood, or in Cully, and so it's, it's very exciting work, and the, the money that we have is, barely covers the, the type of work they're doing. So it's, it's always an issue trying to cobble together funds, and we're helping them fundraise privately as well to meet their needs. Commissioner Fitch, you asked for recap on our, our general fund. This is, this is, the total general fund support that we receive, which you can see is, is, is split between neighborhood, the neighborhood work we do, including EOI and the traded sector work that we do. We also receive, pretty much every year, an allocation for our small business loan fund that provides non-TIF working capital. The, the, the ongoing is, is basically the same as, as last year with the, with the cost of living increase. We have the Southeast Works decision package added into, into this mix. I wasn't sure, I think there's some conversation about VOS that's happening, so, so that may also be added in as a, as another decision package. We had our two decision packages not included in the mayor's proposed budget, so we've zeroed those out here. But basically, this is a status quo general fund budget for us, and it, you know, these, these are the kind of vital programs that we operate, so it's, you know, this represents, I think, an appropriate amount of support for the-
Where do you fund the Chevy decisions? Is it general fund or other?
It's typically general fund. It typically comes out of the, the second, the traded sector category. When we have projects that, that actually support work in our urban renewal areas, then we can, some of our time can, can be paid for out of TIF, but it's, high percentage of it is general fund.
Right.
And that Southeast Works is one-time money?
Yeah, it's one-time, it was last year was one-time money, and so it's, once again, one-time money, yeah.
We need to keep tracking that. And then VOS, how much is that?
It was thirty?
It was a thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Thirty, right, because I think that was another glitch, so maybe we can see how we can make that ongoing.
Yeah, I think because it was one-time, that's why it probably got lost in the shuffle.
Was there a third that got lost, or no?
Village Market was added.
Oh, the Village Market.
Last year, it was one-time.
That was one-time, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're coming back in two weeks for us to adopt the budget?
Coming back one week for a hearing.
One week a hearing, but yeah, in two weeks, you, you vote as our budget committee on the budget, yeah.
Accepting the budget?
Yeah, or just, yeah, yeah.
Receiving.
So, that's my overview of, of our budget. I'm happy to, we're happy to get into any questions about any of the, anything in the budget, anything in the, the budget document itself. And, you know, by budget law, we, we present our budget, the document, as these separate funds, so it's really our budget, like the city's, is, is basically a roll-up of all these- these legally separate funds, and so that's what you see in the document here. Happy to make any, to translate. I think you're used to seeing the URA budgets that appear in the back of the, of the budget document, beginning at page 109. That's the, I think, what you typically see from us in terms of a, of a URA budget with resources up top, requirements below, and the line items in that, in that format.
And can you remind us where we are again in total staff positions? You, you went down from 134 in 12, 13 to 93 in 14, 15. Where does this end up as proposed? How many total positions?
It's a total of 95 positions, 93 full-time and two.
95 is a number that we, that we settled on, and then we just bounce around. We don't add FTE, but we might have vacancies and things like that, so I don't know that we've been at 95 filled positions, but we have 95 positions.
Right.
So you're, you're, you're at the new normal.
That's the new normal. That was our plan all along, and we're, we're staying at 95 unless something magically changes, but I don't foresee that happening.
Ben, did you have?
Just a minor technical clarification. You are convened as the PDC Budget Committee today to receive the budget.
Receive it.
You are not accepting it today.
Right, we're receiving it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Patrick, I have a few questions, and these are things I'd be happy to get follow-ups from you.
Yep.
Because I think we're going to lose a quorum, we, we risk of losing a quorum in about an hour, so I want to make sure we get through the, the, the normal agenda. Number one, could I get an update on the Multnomah County Health Department headquarters?
Yep.
And the specific issue that I have is, what is the timeline for some decision on that?
Okay.
Because I don't believe, since I was the sponsor of that particular budget item, that it was indefinite.
Okay.
So I understand they're on track to do something, presumably, provided they get the hype, but I'd like to know what the timeline is, because, again, I don't, the council did not make this an open-ended allocation, and we did throw in the dirt, so that's number one. Number two, at what point in the process will we get an update on what's actually happening at Centennial Mills?
We can, we can do that anytime, so.
So at some point, could you just, because you mentioned there, there's two things happening, could we get something, a follow-up, just to let us know, what phase are we tackling? What's happening? Because we're likely to start hearing from people just asking what's going on, and, and if we could get an update.
Would you like, are you suggesting, like, us come before council and get an update, or individually get an update?
I'd settle for an email that just tells me the moving pieces, and then if we have any follow-up questions.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been approached about some meetings just to get some additional information, and it'd be helpful to know where we stand and where you are in your phasing, and, and how much you're allocating to that project.
Okay.
On the two, on the two decision packages that were not funded in the mayor's proposed budget, I'd like to know a little bit more about those asks and how they fit within your overall, the new strategic plan. And, and again, I'd settle for something in writing.
Okay.
And, you know, whether they're funded this year, or if we have the luxury of budget surplus next year, we, we salt them. I just want to have a better understanding of how those two asks that weren't funded fit within your overall vision for the, for the bureau.
Okay, happy to do that.
And, and finally, if you, if, if you had an extra $100,000 of general fund money for neighborhood economic development in the slide you showed us before, what would be your highest and best priority?
You're asking to get back to you on that, or you want me to answer off the cuff?
I'm just curious, you have, you have a bunch of very laudable things, but as between things like NPIs, loan funds, various kinds of things, I'm just, I'm using this metaphorically. If you had the extra $100,000, what's your highest and best use?
I, I, I'll give you my off-the-cuff answer. I, I'm sure there's folks back at PDC who would have a variety of answers. We could always use more support for the NPIs, the existing NPIs, and then I think you recall that last year we, we received general fund money to, to, to kind of help the Lenstown Center folks, the Old Town, and, and the stakeholders in MLK move, move along an NPI path as well, because we feel like that's a model that really does work. So, so those are fledgling efforts that are different, different stages, so I would probably want to continue to support that work. I don't think we have capacity, given both our staff, but also the funding constraints of like NPIs everywhere, but, but I do think we, we have a good sense of the universe now that we will want to operate, and I would love to have more support for that. So we have the six NPIs of the main main streets that we continue to operate in Alberta and Zions, and I would love to see the same level of activity on MLK, Lenstown Center, and, and capacity. Yeah, have organizational capacity. I mentioned when we, into the, the 40 plan, we're saying is, we can talk about business development, I think it is, to balance the, 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 the Jay District folks, I think are the best example, just like what we're doing, creating the capacity to lead what's happening in our neighborhood. Because everybody now wants to be in the Jay District, there's, there's going to be less rent training, is it, and people moving in. Does, does the Jay District have the ability to be in the lead there? Because we, we think they should be in the lead, not us, not, not metro, not planning. So, so that means capacity, that means adding staff, and I, and, and so I would love to have the resources to help the Jade and, and all the others get to that point, where we're helping them with their plans.
One final comment. You've got a ton on your plate, and it seems like we just recently had that strategic plan conversation, and now you're trying to match the budget to the plan, and you're doing so with fewer resources, so I get that you're slammed. I would request, though, that we get the proposed budget at least a week before this hearing.
Okay, that's fair.
I think we all worked diligently to go through it yesterday, but it'd be helpful we had it a week before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, direction?
Yeah, and like Commissioner Fritz, I'll rattle off a list of questions where you can answer the ones that you think you can, but at least preliminarily quickly, and otherwise we'll hear offline. But one thing that CBO noted is that your history of spending budgeted resources varies significantly depending on category. Like, over the last several years, you've spent a fairly small amount of money budgeted for business development, a somewhat, a greater amount, but still often much less than budgeted for property redevelopment, and then it sort of goes in a continuum to infrastructure, housing, and administration, where you spend the vast majority of what's budgeted. And CBO suggested that maybe we should look at shifting resources towards the categories where you seem better able to actually spend what's budgeted. So I'm just curious what your, you know, present sense, impression, reaction to that suggestion is.
This is a dynamic that we've been tracking for years, so it's not a new dynamic. I would, I would respectively suggest that, that's kind of misdiagnosis of the issue. I think it's the type of work that drives the timing of projects, so, you know, PBOT has a queue of projects for the next 30 years, right? So if there's money, put it together, you can move it forward. There's the, what happens on something like the post office or whatever, these, there's just, there's different variables at, at work, and so I've always, my, I think we should do what we do, which is establish priorities by, by outcomes, by the type of work we're doing, and do our best to move those along. Every type of project, type of work is going to move on a different timeline, and, and, and to make decisions based on which ones we can get the money out the door most quickly, I just think that's the wrong lens on it. But if, if, if the council and our board says we should be spending more on infrastructure because it's the right thing to do, then that's, that's a different thing, right? That's, that's entirely legitimate way of talking about it, but the, the pace of investment, I think, is not the right lens to look at it. Because then you would never, you would never do the big private real estate, you'd never do them. And I, and I don't think that's what anybody here is, would suggest.
In the, I mean, it's a smaller category, but in business development, you, the history is of spending significantly less than 50% of what's budgeted.
It's hard money to get out because it's tax increment, so tax increment has to be spent in a very specific way that is oftentimes ill-suited to the needs of businesses. We budget, it's a pretty small amount of our budget, so if you look at the percentage of, so it's not like we're, you know, preventing other projects from happening, but we, we budget, and you budget by URA, so I have, you know, legal funds, so if I'm going to have money available, I'm going to have it across each URA so that I'm, I'm ready wherever the business opportunity comes, and it almost typically doesn't come in every URA, so that's, to that, that impacts it. And then some years, yeah, we just, we aren't able to use it because, because of the mismatch. I can't do a working capital loan with TIF, right? Or if I'm going to put money into a business, it's got to go into tenant improvements. Well, that may not be what a business needs at that moment, or it might be that that's a real estate investment, not a business investment. So, you know, I would have the same thing. I would, I would, I would say, is it appropriate amount to be, to have? Are we, are we missing out on any priorities as a result? But if we, you know, but if we have money available for one, for one moment, like Daimler, then I think we should keep, keep, keep doing and allowing. I mean, the benefit of our, people can have different views on this philosophically, but the benefit of, of the way that we're funded versus the way the city's funded is, is that the, I can use the money next year, right? So it's not like, and it's, there's an end to it, as we all know, so at some point, the money's going to, is going to end, so it's not, we don't roll it over infinitely. So we have this finite period of time in which to spend the money, and if it happens this year, great, but it could happen, but the fact that we have the flexibility to do it next year, you know, that, I think that, that allows us to, to take on the type of work that we take on, which is different than what other, other bureaus take on.
There's fairly large contingency numbers in some of the URA's, like for Central East Side, it's, for 15, 16, it's 6.5 million, for River District, it's 14.3 million. So what happens if that contingency money isn't actually needed for budgeted projects? I mean, does it, do you have the flexibility to spend that on other stuff without coming back to council, or does it necessarily come back to council to decide what to spend that amount on if it's not taken up?
So we used, I'll answer the first half, Tony, I'll let Tony give the official answer. Contingency is, is basically a fund balance. We use the term contingency, not like a construction project does. We use it as, it's a term that we use, what it really represents is the fund balance. So it's the money that, the resources that we have on hand that we don't have a forecasted use for in this coming fiscal year, so it rolls over to the next year. It is available in the event that we do need to, we overbudget, but we have very specific constraints on our ability to, to move things on the fly. It would, it would, there's certain things would trigger us going back to our board or going back to council. So we, we don't have ultimate flexibility to move all that contingency back in without, without getting approval on it.
Right, and, and adding to that, some of the contingency is reserved for projects or programs that are forecasted, in the five-year forecast, so it's a rolling balance. And then there are contingencies in those later years, but sometimes what contributes to those contingencies are placeholders, estimates for loan payoffs, or potential property sales, and so they're somewhat contingent on those actually happening.
It may not exist, so some, but some of the money that's in that contingency line may not actually exist, it's just that we forecast it as being paid off, as paying off this year, and if it doesn't, then it, then it won't be there as well. But it's basically fund balance is what it is.
So, I mean, is there an argument that we should be more specific about what we think that it might be spent on, given that it's not sort of the classic construction contingency?
So if you, if you look at our budget, I think one of the reasons why we do the forecast is that we show how the money flows through over the, over the five-year period, so, so the contingency, if you look at the bottom, the contingency in any one urban real area will trend towards a much smaller number by the end of the five-year period, right? So that's what I would be worried about, is if we just had this contingency and it wasn't ever going away or declining. But the fact that we have contingency for this fiscal, coming fiscal year doesn't necessarily mean that we don't have a use for it. It, it, it could be in, it's, it's probably in the five-year forecast somewhere, so that's, and, once again, I mean, I, the board and council have the ability to, to have a different philosophy, but, but we, we have, we do a longer look in our budgets because of the work we do, so we, we, and if we were just year to year and spent everything in our hands year to year, we wouldn't be able to take on long-term projects. So we do this five-year look, and we, and we, but, and we have the benefit of forecasting out five years with our dollars, because it's more of a fixed revenue source as opposed to the city, which has to worry about whether revenues are going to go up or down.
Okay, so, just to be clear, when you see the contingencies declining out years, does that mean that you are assuming that the contingency left over from the previous years does get spent on specific things?
Yeah, it ties out, so, so the contingency number is on the bottom of year, of the, of one year, ends up being the fund balance starting point in the next column, and it works its way down. So, so it's more of an accounting mechanism than it is a true contingency-like in a, in a construction project.
So, want to get anything else on the table and try to move on soon, because we've got, we're going to lose.
Do you have other questions, Commissioner? Obviously, I'm happy to take them offline, and we'll, we'll get you answers, so.
I was just curious whether the very popular storefront improvement grants survived your strategic plan? Do we still have those?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, they're, they're obviously, yes, they are part of our most popular program, and, and they're an important part of the work we do in our neighborhood commercial corridors, so, yeah.
Okay, good.
Great stuff. Okay, anything else that want to get on the table now? Again, direct any further requests to Patrick before the public hearing, but at that point, then I'm going to, I'm going to set that public hearing for May 20th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers, and, and adjourn this meeting of the PDC Budget Committee until then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gina. We will now reconvene as.
I'm sorry, I'm, uh, Mayor, we.
Did we forget something?
I always forget to do this. We have invited testimony.
Oh, sorry, we did, we did forget that. I'm going to reconvene as the Budget Committee, yes, we did have one, one person as invited testimony, I think, right?
Yes.
All right, we'll take, we'll take the invited testimony and then continue the hearing to the 20th after that, so.
Mr. Call?
Mr. Call, come on up, please, just, just Mr. Call. Welcome. Sorry, we didn't want to leave you, leave you hanging there.
Thank you. My name is Nadal Call. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to speak on the budget. I had the luxury of serving on the NED Leadership Group Budget Committee this last winter, and it learned a lot, and it was very productive. I also serve on the Board of the Gateway Area Business Association, and with that, one of the PDC programs that began last year was a, another committee that was set up to focus on the streetscape and create a vision plan for the Halsey-Widler corridor. That group decided to formalize and eventually became a formal subcommittee of GABA, and three of us are now board members of GABA. So I, I tell you this to give an example of the fact that we are somewhat, somewhere of a crossroads in the development of Gateway. And Gateway is merely an example of the potential that we have citywide. You know, we, the budget, of course, covered Interstate and Lent, and I'm going to focus a little bit on Gateway, because that's where my efforts have been in the last year and a half. Gateway, like many of the other business districts, is in severe need of economic development, economic growth. In my opinion, you can't achieve that without also communicating well and developing relationships with the community. And so the Halsey-Widler group also has many of the Neighborhood Association people on board, and it has been a real pleasure working with members of the PDC over the last year and a half. The effort and the resources that they've put in to our district is, is really an integral part of our growth. I also happen to be a property owner and a business owner on Halsey, and literally a week ago, just received a DOS grant from PDC for further development of my property, and those storefront improvement grants that we've discussed, I'll be taking full advantage of that, and without those, I wouldn't be able to make the change within my own property, won't be able to open more businesses. And, and I've shared a lot of these conversations with other business owners and property owners in the district, and I know there was a question earlier on regarding the, the usage of, of these programs, and how sometimes it looks like they're not being utilized. And, you know, I, I think a lot of that has a lot more to do with the property owners maybe not necessarily understanding, or historically not being willing, and I, I feel like there's just been a lot of change in, in the recent year or two in the open-mindedness of property owners to actually work with, with city council and, and the, the city organizations to actually help us develop our properties and our businesses and our neighborhoods. So I'm here in full support of, of the budget.
Well, I just want to thank you and, and the other property owners that you've gotten engaged. I mean, we're really at a point of takeoff in lense because of advocacy from the neighborhood level, so it's really essential. I mean, if we're gonna achieve that kind of takeoff in Gateway over the next couple of years, your role's pretty important.
Mayor, Mr. Call hosted Venture Portland and East Portland Business Leaders last week, and he's too modest to say so, but he owns Furniture Plus on Halsey. He owns, he's a franchisee with other business interests, and we learned recently, he's also now a filmmaker. And he is, his, he and his brothers have expanded their, their business enterprises. So, we're very grateful for their work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. So, then, again, we will, we will open the public hearing on May 20th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers on this proposed budget. We will adjourn as the PDC Budget Committee and reconvene as the City Council. And we will take up item number 478, I believe.
You had a sign-up sheet for the public testimony?
That was a mistake.
So, you're just eliminating it?
That was a mistake. It's on the 20th.
It stayed?
Mm-hmm.
That was, that was my office that set out that sign-up sheet. Sorry.
Okay. So, let's move to 478.
Update City of Portland Fair Wage Policies to Establish a Minimum Wage of $15 per Hour for Employees Working Under Covered Service Contracts.
Good morning. Welcome to our team that are making some adjustments to this important council policy.
Great. Thank you, and good morning. Josh Alper, Mayor Hale's office. As you remember, about a month, month and a half ago, council approved a $15 minimum wage plan. At that time, we knew there were gonna be some tweaks to make it more clear. And so, Betsy Ames has taken the lead on doing that, working with community stakeholders. And so, what you have before you are those tweaks. I'll turn it over to Betsy just to walk through what they are.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Betsy Ames. I'm with the Office of Management and Finance. As Josh mentioned earlier this year, council passed a resolution, and that resolution directed OMF to amend the City of Portland's fair wage policy in city code. It directed the Bureau of Human Resources to increase the pay of certain classified positions to at least $15 per hour, and it directed the Parks Commissioner to create a task force to assess appropriate compensation for seasonal recreational and apprenticeship work. I'm here today to present the amendments to Portland City Code Chapter 3.99 to implement the first of those directives. Anna Canwit, the city's HR Director, has initiated the process for the second directive regarding city employees and budgeted positions within the classified service. And Commissioner Fritz is in the process of establishing the committee structure to implement the third directive. The ordinance before you today, update city code to implement council's direction to increase the minimum wage rate to $15 per hour for janitorial services, security services, and parking garage attendant services under contracts covered by that chapter. The updates to the code language reflect the direction provided by council earlier this year with further clarifications to be more precise about the timing of the annual cost of living increase and how that increase is determined. The ordinance acknowledges changes to the benefits environment, including requirements under the Affordable Care Act and the city sick time requirements, and updates to code provisions to focus on the minimum wage rate of $15. The ordinance directs bureaus to amend or renew contracts as needed to be implemented with an effective date of July 1st of this year for all covered contracts and employees. The city has approximately 20 contracts for these services that will need to be amended in the next month and a half. The ordinance also clarifies that certain agreements are not covered by Chapter 3.99 to remove any ambiguities. As noted in the impact statement, bureaus need to have final code language in order to amend their contracts and determine the financial impacts of these changes. We believe the $900,000 included in the mayor's proposed budget is a good estimate of the total increase in costs. We will be able to determine the final cost once the amended contracts are finalized. Lastly, we have included an emergency clause in the ordinance in order to ensure that bureaus can amend the contracts to meet that July 1 implementation date, and to provide bureaus time to work with the city budget office as soon as possible to finalize the costs so that they can be included in the adopted budget you'll be voting on later this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
A clarifying question. On, under the, now the directs number, Part C, council confirms that the stadium operating agreement, the intergovernment agreement with Trimat and the City of Portland for enhanced transit, male, male upkeep, and the agreement with downtown clean and safe are not covered by 399, which I agree with. What does it mean and directs bureaus to review and amend those agreements if necessary?
I, I can speak to the stadium operating agreement. There's a reference to Chapter 3.99 in there, so we would need to amend that reference. And we've already initiated conversations with Peregrine about keeping the wages that they have been paying for their seasonal part-time employees there at an even level, and working on negotiating that before the start of the next calendar year.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? We may have more at the end of the hearing, but thank you both, and we'll see who signed up to speak on this item.
I was like, we have six people signed up, and the first three are Linda Spooner, Felicia Higgins, and Ben, is that Ben Pickering?
Come on up. Good morning.
He may have left. Let's go with Hiram Asma.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hale's and Commissioners. My name is Linda Spore, and I have been a security officer in the Portland Building for five years. I am also a proud member of SEIU Local 49. I am literally here today because of you and my union, SEIU Local 49. I'm currently undergoing chemotherapy. And before security officers organized the SEIU Local 49 two years ago, all my wages would go to cover the medical expenses. As a minimum wage worker, security officers are accustomed to not expect any wage increases, let alone dream of affordable healthcare coverage. Without the city's commitment to using a union contractor, without you, the mayor, and commissioners supporting security officers during our first union contract bargaining, and without my union, I would not be able to afford the cost of my healthcare, and I would not be alive today. As a union security officer, after taxes, I currently take home $1,560 a month. My utilities, including gas, water, electricity, cable, phone, and garbage service, cost me $570 a month. Each month, I pay $109 for car insurance, $150 for my medicine, and we pay $1,100 for rent. And I want to point out that my husband and I only pay the $1,100 for rent because my daughter is our landlord. Market value rent for my home could easily be upwards to $1,700 a month. After paying for all my bills, I have a mere $439 left for food and other activities. If I was renting a house in Portland's expensive rental prices, I would not have anything to eat. So, as you can see, I am very excited that the mayor and commissioners are taking this important step to raise the wages under the fair wage policy. The extra income would mean I would be able to afford a Christmas gift for my grandchild. I might even be able to afford, to pay my daughter the full rental price. The city has proven that time and time again, that they will step up for the working class in our community, from passing mandatory sick days to standing with security officers as we organize our union to improve standards. I would like to thank the mayor for leading on this issue, the commissioners for supporting the raise, and everyone else who has worked on this initiative. I appreciate you having me here and letting me share my stories. This raise is going to make an immediate, real, and meaningful impact on my family, my coworkers, and myself.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor, House Members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Felisa Higgins. I'm the political director of SEIU Local 49, and I'm the registered lobbyist at the City of Portland. Our mission at SEIU Local 49 is to improve the lives of working families, and we firmly believe that this initiative and this council has gone farther than many councils in the past to do exactly that. We applaud the city's work on their commitment to the $15 an hour and continuing to move forward in the piece-by-piece way that the city actually can do. And today, we had members here, as you saw, and we have about 200 members down in Salem, trying to fight for this exact issues, along with affordable sick, with sick days, and fair wage policies, and other really important things for working families. You'll notice in the update to the fair wage policy that there's a, the provision that's been removed around healthcare costs. I'd like to address this directly with the council. It's incredibly important for our workers. Our expectation isn't that the city's gonna move backwards in expecting contractors to provide affordable healthcare for their employees. We know that employer-based healthcare continues to be part of our healthcare system, even as we transition to the Affordable Care Act. However, when fair wage policies were designed and implemented throughout the metro region and other areas of the state, the cost of healthcare inflation was increasing roughly close to the pace of inflation. Then, decades happened, things changed, and medical inflation greatly outpaced the cost of inflation, and was actually eating up large portions of the fair wage policy. And under the current fair wage policy, most of the healthcare that you could offer to a worker at that cost, the worker would not be able to uptake. So, before the security guard officers were organized, the security company you had was actually meeting the fair wage policy standards. However, as Linda just spoke to, their healthcare was still incredibly unaffordable for the individual worker. We believe by removing this provision of the fair wage policy and moving to contracting standards in your, under your sustainability policy, to be more thoughtful about how you're contracting with employers who provide healthcare and a secure retirement is the wave of the future. And best value contracting is the way that the city should move forward on that issue. So, we're in complete and firm support of the fair wage policy, and we look forward to all of the other updates that are coming. We know that this is the first step, and that the next steps are gonna be to look at the things that were left out of this policy, as well as the other workers the city has. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're, you're happy with the healthcare provision? You're okay with it?
Commissioner Fritz, yes. It was actually our suggestion, because it was actually, it was just eating up so much of the wage that a lot of workers weren't making enough to take up both.
Good point. Welcome.
Oh, yeah. I'm Hiram Asma. I'm a volunteer with 15 now. I, I really think that the recent, you know, PDC budget proposal kind of brings to light a major factor as to why you need to raise to 15 at a bare minimum. We're talking about, Amanda asked the gentleman here, you know, so why does, say, housing not included for healthy, complete neighborhoods? It's just my opinion as a Portlander, that's kind of a big deal with healthy, complete neighborhoods, is affordable housing. When the rent going up, skyrocketing left and right, with people like Eric Kress developing Division and other places all around Portland with these high rises in condos and whatnot, rent's gonna go up significantly over here in the next few years. There's only so much you can do to stop that. There are certain irresponsible developments that you can shut down, and there's others that will be within city codes that will occur, and are, it's inevitable. You know, people are selling, people are moving in. The people moving in are not the native Portlanders. These are the people that we are here to request, the people who are currently employed by your, you know, by, by the city, that you honor and respect their needs and their wishes, just like you respect people like Eric Kress. I'm quite frankly, very distraught over the, what I heard about the Budget Committee. I mean, to think of housing as an, as an afterthought when that should be, if not the main thought, one of the main thoughts of the Development Commission. It seems like, you know, we're not being represented by the right people. It seems like you're appointing people to these commissions that are going to price us out of Portland, and that's just my opinion.
Sir, just, I appreciate your opinion, but as the person who has consistently fought for the 30% set aside, can just correct one maybe misimpression?
Sure.
That the PDC does not provide the housing, housing services. It's a pass-through. So, the dollars go to the Portland Housing Bureau, and they show up on their budget, and that's where they're spent. So, I just want to be clear. We, we took housing out of PDC's plan and liberated it to do jobs and other things. So, we can argue about where it shows up on a spreadsheet, but just to be clear, we have made a conscious decision that the Portland Housing Bureau directs those dollars, not PDC. So, I just, I, I don't want form over substance there.
Okay, I got you. So, okay.
They are actually not the Housing Bureau.
Sir, the presentation sort of gave a false impression that they didn't care about housing, but actually, they, they have been told by the previous city council, you don't do that. The Housing Bureau does that. The money, the money passes through PDC.
Okay. So, I misunderstood that, but it's still, it's still not debatable that we are facing increasing skyrocketing rent, and that's going to happen no matter what. So, you need to basically give your own employees a right way to stay in the city, which is being able to afford where they live, not to mention the cost of healthcare that these lovely ladies are fighting for as well. I mean, there are so many components to 15 an hour now. This is kind of, in my personal opinion, a no-brainer, and it would behoove all five of you to vote unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thanks, Linda.
The last two who signed up are Charles Johnson and Joe Walsh.
Come on up.
My name is Joe Walsh, and I represent Individuals for Justice. Congratulations. $15 an hour is a concession level number. It's not a great number, $30,000 a year, if you figure it out. I get that, I get more than that in my retirement. Think about that. I see your people working in this building, whether it be security or janitorial services, they are professional, even though the security and I disagree sometimes, but they are professional. I like them. The janitorial service is outstanding. But as you pat yourself on the back, I want you to think about what my shirt says. My shirt says $15 an hour for everyone, and that includes all the people that work for the parks. I know that's a huge problem for you, Amanda. However, it should be the goal of this city to make sure that anybody that's associated with the city, worked for this city, or is represented by the unions in the city, makes a minimum of $15 an hour. That should be the goal. And it's, I get really angry when I hear people say, "Well, we don't have enough money. You know, we got all these temporary people and casual people, and what do we do with them? And how do we pay them $15 an hour?" The goal should be to pay them $15 an hour, and then we figure it out. And I am really encouraged by you, Mayor, because it seems to me that every time you go down into the basement, you find a jaw with more money. You found $12 million first, and then you went down to the basement, and you found $50 million. Please go down again and take care of the parks people, the casual people, and we can all be proud of that, and we should be proud of that. And what you're doing is a good thing. Let me end with that as a positive. But it's a first step, small step, you know? So, pat yourself on the back gently, and work to get the other people. If we pay people less than $15 an hour, I don't care what you call them. It's a shame. A shame. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Charles Johnson, and I want to apologize for not being fully prepared. Next time I come up to talk to you about wages, I will have done a breakdown to talk about the presumption that with the large vacations that you can take over the course of a year, you maybe do only average about 40, 45 hours per week of work. And we're gonna talk about your hourly wage and the level of benefits you get, and why you can't find the money to pay the hard-working people who save the lives of the homeless. The police push around $15 an hour at TPI, $15 an hour central city concern. You, with your poor policies, make it very difficult for the Portland mall people to pick up trash, because in the city's brilliance, you can walk from here to Market Street in front of the extremely expensive, high-property tax-valued Wells Fargo building, and there's no fricking public trash cans for five blocks. So, pay more people $15 an hour to do it, not just these workers who have explained to you why it's fair and just for them to get 15, but all personnel working on, at primarily city-funded contracts, and work towards a policy where even city contractors, businesses that have living wage policies, businesses that have, no employees needing public assistance and food stamps, get contracting preference for the city. It's, as usually gets mentioned here... It's, as usually gets mentioned here, even though we've been trained to think of, oh, fifteen is exorbitant, any economist worth anything can tell you that businesses seeking low wages have distorted the minimum wage since the seventies. If we were, if minimum wage had kept pace with costs of living and productivity, minimum wage should really be around $20. So when we have this budget surplus, and you do not adequately channel it to get everybody up to fifteen dollars an hour, you should feel a little uncomfortable walking in this building because the people you work with that are making less than fifteen would be morally justified to spit in your faces because that's what you're doing to them when you do not pay them fifteen dollars an hour. Find a way, I am a little bit disappointed, Mayor, that when you went down and found the $50 million jar in the basement, you didn't do a better job of allocating more of it to bringing the lowest-paid city workers up to living wage. But I know that you're going to do, as Mr. Walsh suggested, and find some more money in the basement jars or wherever it is, and get these valuable, hard-working human beings up to a decent wage, and set the trend so that people are paid enough that they can afford to live out in Rosewood or somewhere. Bye.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay. Further council discussion, and let's take a roll call vote on the ordinance, please.
Fish?
Mayor Hales and Commissioner Salzman, thank you for bringing this matter forward. Betsy Ames and Josh Alpert, thank you for doing the staff work and, and bringing us the tweaks. I want to especially thank the rank-and-file folks of Fifteen Now and the rank-and-file members of SEIU who've been advocating and lobbying extensively on this issue. And we've heard from many of you, and you've made a compelling argument, and as we heard today, this is just a first step, and it's a down payment on a larger agenda, but it's something that we can do and do right away, and I'm pleased that the council is taking this action. Aye.
Salzman?
Well, I want to thank the mayor for his leadership and delivering on what he announced in his State of the City speech, and for Betsy Ames, Josh Alpert, Matt Grum of my office for working with Felisa Higgins and others of SEIU 49 and the Fifteen Dollar Now Coalition to make this moment finally here. And I agree that, you know, fifteen dollars seems like a lot to a lot of people, but as we saw in our State of the Housing Report that was presented two weeks ago, a $30,000 annual income will entitle you to rent exactly nothing in, in terms of a two-bedroom apartment in the city limits of Portland. So we still have a long ways to go to boost, to boost people's income levels. This is a start. It's a good start, and it's money in people's pockets for our security, janitorial, and parking attendants, and the few city employees that were not making fifteen dollars an hour full-time. So it's a good step in the right direction, and I think, as my colleague just said, I, I regard it as a down payment. Aye.
Novick?
I simply echo what my colleagues have said. Congratulations to Commissioner Salzman and the mayor, and the members of Fifteen Now, and Felisa, Josh, Betsy. And again, as everybody has said, this is just a down payment. Aye.
Fritz? I'm very glad to hear my colleagues talking in terms of this being a down payment. There aren't any more buckets of money in the basement, as far as I know. I think we've looked fairly thoroughly at this point, and so I'm going to be looking at my bureau's budget requests in light of this ordinance and revising some of my requests to council because it's not equitable that we pay part-time workers who are contracted workers much more than we pay our part-time workers in parks. We have workers in parks who make minimum wage. We have people doing the same work as others, making 11 bucks an hour, and it's not okay. So I think we do have a, a big challenge ahead of us, and I think it needs to, we need to start making that down payment for our parks workers in this current budget, and I appreciate the mayor's commitment to partner with me on that. I thank you also, Commissioner Salzman, for your leadership on this, Felisa Hagan and the community partners, joined by Mark, our wonderful janitor, custodian here in the City Hall, and thank you so much for all of the work that you do. Very happy to be able to provide this benefit to our contracted workers, and I'm hopeful that we can at least make a start with our season, with our parks workers this budget. Thanks to Betsy, too. Aye.
Hales?
Well, thank you all, and I'm, I'm really proud to be a member of this council, not just because I think we reflect the progressive values that are here in this room on this subject, and not just because we have great staff members like Josh and Betsy and Matt who, who not only do this work but are passionate about it, and we appreciate that about them, but because on a, in a larger sense, I think this shows our understanding as a city that we're not passive passengers on a national ship that maybe is going somewhere we don't want to go. I've quoted over and over again from this appalling story in the New York Times last Sunday, in which the, the statistic was pointed out that the bonus pool on Wall Street, just the bonus pool, just for people that work in financial services on one street in one city in this country, is twice the annual income of all the full-time workers in the United States working at minimum wage. That's appalling, and it also makes you feel sort of hopeless, like, that's so bad, what hope do we have here? Well, I think Portland proves over and over again on lots of subjects, whether it's the environment, or thinking about workers, or thinking about affordable housing, that we don't want to be a passive passenger on a, on a trip we don't want to be on. We are going to chart our own course and say, no, we're going to actually try to do with our own tools what we can to craft a different kind of economy here, and this is a piece of that. And I think we've got a, a real record as a city that this is a part of, showing that we can do that, and we have to start with what we can do this month, next month, this year, next year, and keep doing the work together. But I'm very proud of our direction and our commitment, again, to not wait for even a progressive state government, much less a paralyzed federal government, to take the leadership on these things. We get to lead on these issues, and this is a great example of us as a community doing that, and I'm very proud to vote aye. Thank you all. Okay. Thank you. So we're going to take testimony on some items in which we're not going to be able to act today because Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner Fish need to leave for a very important event, and we'll take, we'll go ahead and take those items up, but we'll actually take action on them this afternoon, and we'll start with, I guess we'll do 479, 480, and 481 altogether. So if you'd read those three, Carla.
479, authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Police Criminal Investigations Division for the use of Oregon Department of Justice, Oregon High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program grant funds to reimburse the state for drug interdiction efforts on behalf of the HIDTA Interdiction Team. 479, accept a grant in the amount of $172,700 and appropriate $40,000 for fiscal year 2014-15 from the Oregon Department of Justice and the Oregon High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Program for sworn personnel overtime and program expenses for Portland interdiction efforts. And 481, accept a grant in the amount of $36,000 from the Oregon Department of Justice and the Oregon High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Program for program expenses for Portland Metro Gang Task Force interdiction efforts.
Great. Thank you. Lieutenant Grants, Sergeant Bates, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. The ordinance is for $172,700 grant, $122,700 of that will be for the Portland Police Bureau Interdiction Team, and $50,000 of that will be a pass-through to OSP, who's part of that interdiction team. And we'll go into the IGA a little bit, but that, that's really for the fiscal years or the, the actual grant years of 2013, the current one of 2014, and for the 2015 grant of which we're requesting for this one as well. It is, it is to facilitate the interdiction narcotics in the tri-county area. That team mainly focuses its efforts on the airport, train, bus, parcel, highway, interdiction efforts, trafficking, or targeting drug trafficking organizations through coordinated efforts between the Portland Police Bureau and our federal and state partners.
Not sure if everyone saw the news reports, but there were some pretty large amounts of, I think it was cocaine and heroin, interdicted this year, thanks to those efforts. So some rather spectacular quantities, appalling quantities.
Yeah, we seized this past year roughly 37,000 grams of heroin and 34,000 grams of methamphetamine and 80,000 grams of, of cocaine this past year, up almost 500% in each one of those categories.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
So is there still crack cocaine? When you say cocaine, are you referring to?
Powder cocaine, there, the, the seizures of crack cocaine have, have plummeted. We only seized roughly 100 grams of crack cocaine last year.
Great.
Sorry to see the resurgence of methamphetamine. I mean, all these drugs do terrible damage to the people that are addicted to them, but methamphetamine may be the worst.
It is terrible. It absolutely is. We're, we're happy to see the production of methamphetamine move out of, of the city, but yeah, the, the use of methamphetamine is still very high.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you both. Stand by, there may be some more, and we'll take public testimony on all three of these items, and then again, we won't be able to act on them until this afternoon, but Lieutenant, do you want to add some things? I'm sorry.
I believe I have ordinance 481, which is the additional for the Metro Gang Task Force.
Yes, okay, good.
Okay. My name is Mike Krantz, I'm lieutenant with the Tactical Operations Division, assigned to the gang enforcement team and the Metro Gang Task Force. The ordinance is to accept a grant in the amount of $36,000 from the Oregon Department of Justice Hyda Trafficking Area Program, and for program expenses for the Portland Metro Gang Task Force efforts. The mission of the Metro Gang Task Force is to identify and target for prosecution criminal enterprise street gangs or groups responsible for drug trafficking, money laundering, or violent acts in the Portland metro area. The grant will assist with the ability of the Metro Gang Task Force to carry out its mission, and will assist the Portland Police Bureau with the improvement of livability through the reduction of organized criminal gang activity and the provision of harm reduction through the limitation of illegal drug supply through these gangs. Police Bureau applied for the Oregon Hyda grant in March of 2014 to support the Police Bureau and the Portland Metro Gang Task Force Initiative, which will assist in providing the means of investigation of violent street gang members who are involved in the distribution of controlled substances in the Portland area. We were notified that Oregon Hyda will grant the award of $36,000 to the Portland Metro Gang Task Force via the Portland Police Bureau, and reimburses for maximum $36,000 for the approval calendar year of 2015, and no match is required for this grant.
Great. Great. Thank you both. Thanks very much. Okay, does anyone want to speak on these items?
Stephen Entwistle?
Okay, come on up.
Good morning, Mayor. To Commissioners. My name is Stephen Entwistle, longtime Portland resident, 55 years, member of Individuals for Justice, and founder of Healing Man Sanctuary, also whistleblower for less fortunate and helping 100 million friends. For the record, we're against this, because it reminds me back in the 19, early 1980s when Ronald Reagan started his ramp-up of Nixon's, Richard Nixon's drug war. This is not a law enforcement issue, drugs. This is a health issue. Anytime you use law enforcement, you're going to have all sorts of problems. Haven't we, haven't we had enough of this for the last 35 years? I mean, they got TV shows, they're all exciting, and all the adrenaline and everything, and just may, oh, you're such a good guy to, you know, get, get rid of these, you know, worthless vermin that are using these drugs. These are people. These people have families. These families have children. Okay? Law enforcement is not the, is not the way to solve this, okay? Because it'll never be solved. This is just a way to keep in place a Jim Crow system which feeds off of this, okay? They feed off of this money, they feed off of this suffering. You even got people that are waiting with catcher's mitts to catch houses and children, okay? But they don't want to change it, they want to keep it just the way it is. And unfortunately for them, people are starting to wake up. People are starting to wake up about the drug laws, they're starting to read books like Michelle Alexander's The New Jim Crow, which I recommend everybody should read before they make any decisions on any kind of drug policies whatsoever. Our prisons, we got too many people. Why aren't we having like a parole-to-payroll program, okay? I don't hear anybody talking about that. All I hear about is just people wanting to shove everybody out of the way so they can build in this, you know, we can make it pretty for billionaires, okay? The billionaires already have it made, okay? They know where they're going to go when they're, and when there's an emergency, okay? The rest of the folks don't, they're all on their own. Making Portland a beautiful place for billionaires to come and sit, where they have power in the parks, where they have gentrification in the neighborhoods, where they got, get rid of the other, is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll, oh, sorry, didn't see you, Joe. Come on up.
I know, I'm small. But I'm growing. For the record, my name is Joe Walsh, I represent Individuals for Justice. We get very nervous about these task forces, these police officers that specialize in gang enforcement or drug enforcement. We get nervous because what happens with these task forces or groups that break off from the police department and do something the majority of their time, is they become isolated, and they become people that go to the streets and then, in their interpretation, if you look like a gang member, we're going to hassle you. So we get very nervous with these task forces, and I know these are grants, but it's money to pay for something that we get very nervous about. We would rather see the police department acknowledge that they have a problem and respond to that problem instead of setting up task forces, which gets to be very dictatorial. So that's our objection. We would like you to consider that and try to put in some provisions as the police commissioner to say, hey, you know, what is the definition that you're using for gang members? And my understanding is the definition is so general that the three of us could be considered gangs.
Absolutely.
Okay? That's our problem, because when you specialize in these kinds of things, you become dictatorial and you become very anchored in your definition. So we would rather see the general police department sit down and discuss these things and not just four, five guys that are hanging around and let's, let's go kick some butts in, on the street, and that's what's happening, and you know that's happening. So put some restrains on these guys. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I have not been around for a while, but as I listen to
Just put your name in the record.
Oh, Laquita Lanford. Thank you, Mayor. About, you know, the funding that are funded and through, what my concerns are with that, if it, if it gets approved, would be that we, we, I believe that we need more opportunity for people in the community of color to get help, and just not in the community of color, but as we know where the high, the high numbers for methamphetamine and heroin is a really big deal in our communities. Downtown, I see it every single day, and are you, they really need help, whether they're white, black, Asian, Latino, there's the help that is needed. The in-force of when, like Mr. Joe said about gangs, I'm, I was born in LA, and so ever since I've been in Portland, I cannot identify with a gang, because I don't see Crips and I don't see blood. So when I see information on the record in the news about this is a gang-related activity, that is hard for me to distinguish, because if I was in California, I would say, I would know where to or where not to go. But in Portland, since January, we've had community violence in our community that is very shocking to any individual, so wherever it is that I'm at, I'm, as a person of color, have to be targeted by the police, which I have been recently, and the work that I do to help build and mend those relationships are, are very uncomfortable for myself. And so And so my concern is, or just one something, is that we need help. And money with the police is not going to solve the help that the community needs. And when Commissioner Dan asked about crack cocaine, crack is whack. Not that many people smoking crack anymore. So those people that are been smoking crack for the last 30 years, and my mother was a crack, she was addicted to crack for 20 years. My mom has been clean for 15 years, and she lives in miracles, and she's doing very well, and I'm very proud of my mother, and she needs extensive rehabilitation, you know? So these conversations that we have with the money that are coming through our city every single day, there's opportunities for training programs, apprenticeship to get these young men and young women the sustainable help that they need long-term, not to be in a rotating door of in and out of treatment centers on the block and then still end up smoking crack, if that's what you want to call it, or are youth, are picking their faces because they're addicted to meth, and they mentally are unable to be in the right state of mind. So that's what it was concerned, but I just wanted to say that, that that's the help that we really need in this city, so that people can have sustainable lives, so that they can get back to reality of things. Thank you.
Good morning, remaining Commissioners. For the record, my name is Charles Johnson, and drug addiction and drug trafficking are no joke. The Portland Police is a joke. Right now, on coin news, there's a story about idiotic police officers complaining about being filmed. We were illegally recorded. So it's very difficult for us to have any faith in the Portland Police Department. I do have, as you know, your new chief and I have had some engagement, and I am still optimistic that there is a desire to make community-responsive policing that respects everybody equally in this city. But when the news is reporting that a man named Mr. Shaw has been investigated by the Portland Police Department and referred to the district attorney because he records what the police do, I don't care what the circumstances are, that is a disgusting waste of money. That money should be going to this type of stuff that we're getting money from the Oregon State Police for, interdiction and prevention of drug trafficking. So while generally I recognize when we have these issues on the budget where it's important to get money from other sources into the Portland Police budget so that we can keep people from being harmed by drugs, and not just reduce supply, but also help people so there's less demand. But I don't really think that I can encourage any money to go through the Police Department when I'm reading idiot things like Portland Police Officer Michael Honl, H-O-N-L, and his business in the 10-400 block of Southeast Knight Street, gets involved with burglary detective Douglas Halpin, and then they're complaining because a citizen named Shaw recorded them. I don't care what they were doing, if it was an undercover drug operation. Portland Police Officers have dangerous habits where they have very little public trust. I like some of the cops. I can deal with them, but public perception is what we're talking about here. So go ahead and vote, well, you won't be voting because there's not, because of the quorum issue, but it's okay to take the grant. But Mayor, the Portland Police Association and the lesser quality people there, I don't know if that includes Daryl Turner, their president, or not, but they are screwing up your efforts to have a police department that the people can believe in. So I hope that you will have a press conference with Officer Michael Honl and burglary detective Douglas Halpin, and get this crap cleared up so that the district attorney is not wasting time and money on this crap when we're trying to prevent people from being killed by methamphetamines or during trafficking of stuff like that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. Anyone else? Okay, I will set these three items over for this afternoon, and we'll take up item 482. Thank you.
482, authorize a contract with the lowest responsive bidder and provide payment for the construction components of the Road 10 MP 3.0 through 4.6 project at an estimated cost of $889,000.
Welcome.
Good morning, good morning, Mayor Hales and Commissioners. I'm David Peters with the Portland Water Bureau. I'm a principal engineer in the engineering services group, and I'm here with Scott Bryan, our project manager for this project. We're here to ask today for the ability to authorize a contract to the lowest responsive bidder for the improvements to Road 10 in the Bull Run watershed. The maintenance of the road system in the Bull Run watershed has been the responsibility of the Portland Water Bureau since the adoption of the Bull Run watershed management unit agreement in 2007. Road 10 is the primary route to the Portland Water Bureau facilities in the watershed. This project is part of a multi-year project to improve this primary route, and there's many reasons why we want to improve this route. Operations and maintenance is a big one. Our employees are going in and out constantly. The safety of those employees is important, and this is also the emergency response route to anything that would happen up at our facilities. The rating of the pavement condition index shows that this 1.6 mile portion of the road is in poor condition, and it requires reconstruction, repair, and resurfacing. Significant sections of the road through the project limits do not meet established standards for safe use by large equipment and regular use by our employees or employees from other agencies. The project includes multiple types of work, including road widening, reconstruction of failed segments of pavement, construction of retaining walls, culvert replacement, and paving and striping. We anticipate the work to start this July and be completed throughout late summer and early fall. The estimated cost for the construction of this work is $889,000 and has a moderate level of confidence, and so.
So this is a paved road, not a gravel road?
It is a paved road, yes.
Okay, questions from the council?
Commissioner Fish had to leave early, but he wanted to make sure we extend our thanks to both of you for your good work on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good work. Okay, anyone want to speak on this item? If not, then it passes second reading next week. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, and then our final item for this morning is 484.
Assess property for sidewalk repair for the Bureau of Maintenance.
Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sherry Matias from the Auditor's Office. Bureau of Maintenance is running a little late, so I don't know if they're going to be able to make it. But this ordinance is for sidewalk repair on property that is required by the city. Any remonstrances have been pulled from this assessment and are not in this ordinance.
Okay, and your reinforcements from PBO have just arrived.
I'm Mike Zeller. I'm one of the sidewalk inspectors at sidewalks.
Okay, thank you both. Any questions about this particular assessment? Okay, thanks very much. Anyone want to speak on this item?
Yes, we have three people signed up.
Okay.
Please come on up, our Betty Kwan, Miriam Patterson, and Mr. Shendrick.
Okay, come on up, please. Bring up another chair for you there. Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Miriam Patterson, and I live in a 1922 house in Northeast 9th that is a land trust home, and I'm a single parent with two teenage boys, and have been in very difficult financial circumstances for a long time due to being laid off, divorced, et cetera. At any rate, when I first moved into this land trust house, we had it looked at by an inspector recommended by the Portland Housing Center, and he said that there was a problem with the sewer line, and we should have someone look at it. So we paid for a company, Steve McBee, I believe, to do a scope underground and see, and indeed, there was a problem. And the, this was before we moved in, so the Saban Community Land Trust agreed to share the cost of fixing it with my ex-husband and I prior to our moving in. But we, I got some estimates that were higher, and they very much wanted to go with the cheapest. And so, and I wasn't really in a position to do anything about that, and just very much wanted to move into this home, because otherwise, there's no way that we could afford to raise our children in such a great location and, you know, large house in, close in Northeast, you know, by not owning the land, but owning the house. So we split the cost, but only a portion of it was fixed, was sort of patched, I suppose. And it's, that's 10 years ago now, and gradually, the porch, the sidewalk, the steps, especially the sidewalk, have been subsiding worse and worse, and I didn't have money to deal with the sewer problem underneath that was causing the sidewalk problem. And I looked for all kinds of possible help, including, Sheree? Yes, actually, we emailed, you were very helpful, by the way. I was looking to see were there any funds available to help someone to pay for a sewer issue who didn't have the money because it was impacting on the sidewalk, et cetera. And I don't imagine it's that healthy, but apparently there wasn't funding. I live five blocks from the MLK Interstate, not Interstate, the MLK corridor. And there are funds for senior citizens, but I'm not old enough yet, and it seems like there was no way that I could get help to deal with the underlying problem. So when I was cited for the sidewalk, I spoke, that means I have to stop talking?
Go ahead and finish up.
Okay. I spoke with the inspector, and I was told to contact the city auditor. So I looked into, is there any way possible to not just pave it over because the problem is underneath with the sewer, and it's just going to have to be redone? But I wasn't able to get any help, and it was paved over, which is clearly safer. I'm not really objecting to the fact that it was paved. But I'm now given the bill of $3,500 to pay for it, and I still can't seem to locate any funds, any way to get help to pay for the underlying sewer problem that was the reason that the sidewalk has subsided. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We'll see if we can get some answers for that.
Thank you.
I'm Shendrick Wilkins, a government subsidized person who gets to shoot his mouth off because I was a veteran. Healthcare for me, except dentistry costs, absolutely nothing. Give me, I went in the military, so I get a lot of things free. These pills don't cost me anything. On Christmas 2013, I threw up on the sidewalk.
Sir, we're here on a sidewalk assessment.
I know, I threw up on the sidewalk in downtown Portland. They spread it down with water.
Right.
Water. Now, I think germs come from, from, I have a target employee, so little kids come in my store and throw up. And bleach water is a disinfectant, so bleach will disinfect something. I got dizzy. I spent-
Are you subject to this sidewalk assessment?
I just want the sidewalk sprayed off.
Okay, well, that's a separate matter. So we got to take up this particular question, which is charging people to fix their sidewalk in front of their house. So that's what we're talking about here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. So mistakes happen, so you'll need to talk with us another time about that. All right, so let's hear from you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no problem.
These pills are free.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, never mind.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Michaela Kelly, and this is Ms. Betty. I'm talking for her on her behalf for her property that's on Milwaukee Avenue. She owns a small bookstore, and then she lives on site behind her house. And the city came out, and they wanted to fix her repairs in front of her sidewalk. She had people in the community that offered to help her fix the sidewalk. She didn't, she doesn't know the city processes. She's from the Philippines. Her husband passed away with kidney failure, and so he was supporting her. He had a pension, so she was getting a pension, and she was running the bookstore after her husband passed. And so she gets this bill, she authorized the city to pay for the parking lot, or for the sidewalk to be repaired. She gave permission for them to fix it because she didn't want somebody in the community to just do it for her and not do it right. She wanted to make sure it was done right. She didn't know any of the legal processes or, you know, anything like that. And so the city came out and they billed her $2,000 to do her sidewalk. And she would normally be able to pay for it with her, the veteran's pension that she gets, but that got cut off, and she had an annual, her taxes last year was $1,900. And she, the bill for the sidewalk is $2,000, and then she had a hearing or something, they reduced it to $1,800. And I guess I just want the city, I want you guys to know her situation. She's been living here. She's by herself. She doesn't have any family. She has no support. Anybody that is able to help her, the people that are willing to help her are her neighbors, you know, people in the community. And so I just wanted to come to you guys, let you guys know what's going on, what the situation is.
And she's already received the bill for the project, right?
She's got the bill, the final inspection, August 13th, 2013, the final inspection was done. She got the assessment. She already had a, I can't remember what the word is.
Deferral?
She already came to you guys one time, and it was reduced from 2,000 to 1,800, and then so, I can't find where it is here.
All right, well, we'll get, we'll get the staff back up in a minute and talk about both of these situations.
I just, I wanted to know what her options are, you know, because I'm willing to help her, and hopefully you guys are willing to help her, too. I don't know what her options are. It says on the paperwork that she, since you guys did the repairs, the City of Portland Maintenance, including needed repairs, must be considered part property ownership. I don't even, what does that mean?
Well, it means it runs with the property, so the cost of the improvements now are attached to the value of the property from the city's standpoint. But what we'll do is, is when we- What's a safe sidewalk?
Okay, I'm going to leave because I don't want to be having that conversation.
These folks have to get a particular problem dealt with, so maybe we could get staff to come back up for just a second.
I know that, I know, I'm sorry, I know that payment installments, that would be an option, but that, you're asking, the bill is her annual income for her taxes.
I understand, so let's get the staff to come back up and just address the question of what options are there for low-income property owners, if any, for in a situation like this? Are there deferrals? Are there payment plans? What are the options? So let me, let me thank you and get them to come back up, and we might also want them to spend some more time with you after the hearing.
She doesn't, she doesn't get any type of government funding. She doesn't get any social security, any food stamps, anything like that. She doesn't have any government help, but I know that people that do go get government help, they have, like, you know, they get, they're low, based on what you make. You know, the bill is based on what you make.
Right.
And so that would be nice if that was some sort of option for her and her situation.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, thank you for coming. We'll get them to come back up and respond, and we might want them to follow up with you as well individually, so. Okay, anyone else want to testify? So then if you would come back up and just refresh our memories at the council about what, for either of these folks' situation, what are, what are the options at this point in the assessment process? If any, so.
Property owners do have the option of financing the amount with us, but there is no other, like, senior deferral we used to have, but that's no longer a program going on with the state.
That was a state program?
It was a state program, yes.
Ah, because I remember that, but I just, yeah, so.
They discontinued it with the state.
So they just ended that, the state just ended that program?
They did.
Ah, okay. Do we have the option of recreating our own? I mean, not that we could do that today, but I'm saying, do we have that option?
I'm not sure. That's definitely something to look into.
Okay, so, so there's, that we can finance the costs of the improvements. There, this property, like all the other properties in the, in the area that got assessed are subject to that, but paying it over time is at least one of the options.
They have a five-year option.
Okay. Any suggestions? So I might want to ask you to meet with them individually to make sure they understand what those options are. I know it may not solve the whole problem, and it just may string it out, but nevertheless, I'd make the sticker shock of getting a $2,000, $3,000 bill, at least something that's a little bit more manageable. But what does our interest rate on financing?
What is our interest rate on financing?
It's a 5.2% interest rate.
And what, how long a repayment period do we offer?
On a $2,000 loan, it would be up to five or 10 years.
So enough to make that a relatively modest annual amount, okay. All right, any other questions for, for staff? Then I'm going to close the hearing, and then this will come back as a, as an ordinance, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, but in the meantime, could you please meet with these folks and give them that information and those options? And with that, we're going to recess until 2:00 PM. Thank you all.